Good evening, everyone. Welcome, everybody in attendance, and welcome to our viewing audience. I am opening the meeting of the Bristol Township Planning Commission. I would ask all those in attendance to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'm going to ask you to remain standing, please. To keep in mind our troops that are in harm's way, our prisoners of war, our killed in action, our missing in action, for all those who are suffering the tragedies of the war in Ukraine, and for all the children who have been separated from their parents and any personal intentions you may have. Thank you very much. And for the few people who just came in, would you be so kind as to make sure your phones are either on vibrate or off, please? Thank you very much. We have three items on our agenda this evening, but before that, we have our commissioners. You will have a copy of the minutes from our March 16th Planning Commission meeting. You've had an opportunity to review those minutes, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
It's been moved.
It's been moved in second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, commissioners. The first item on our agenda this evening is a subdivision. It's for Anur, and I hope I said that properly, Marble and Granite, 225 Lincoln Highway, Fairless Hills, PA, requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval in order to subdivide the property into two lots located at 2900 Veterans Highway, Bristol, PA, tax parcel number 5-24-60, in a C commercial and M-1 light manufacturing zone district of Bristol Township. Good evening.
Tim Duffy, on behalf of the applicant Owner Marble and Granite Incorporated.
Good evening, Tim. How are you?
Good. How are you tonight?
I'm blessed. Have another day. Thank you very much.
That's good. As indicated, we're here for a subdivision. My client, the property in question, it's about 164,000 square feet. My client owner Marble is a fabricator of custom stone countertops presently located down in Falls Township. They're looking to move out of that facility and come here to Bristol Township. To do that, we've entered into a contract with the current owner of the property to subdivide it into two different lots and purchase one of the lots, lot number one, which is the one more towards the right. That's fine. But generally speaking, the property, it's at 2900 Veterans Highway. There presently has two buildings on it. I won't refer to it. Maybe it won't go away. Has two buildings on it, one to the left, one to the right. The property is actually split zoning. At one point in time, it may have actually been two different lots. Where we are, it's the M1 light manufacturing. The other lot, lot number two, is a C commercial. Essentially, we're looking to just basically draw a line down the middle so we can purchase one of the properties so they can bring their business here to Bristol Township. There's going to be no expansion of any footprints, no modifications to existing buildings, except for an exterior facelift to our building. They're going to do some nice stonework on the outside.
And Tim, let me ask you, by any chance, do you happen to have a pointer? This way, if you point at it, our viewing audience can also see what you're talking about. Thank you very much.
Lot number one is the lot that our client owner Marble is intending to acquire. That's about 76,350 square feet. That's the one that zoned M1 light industrial, and this is the remaining lot, lot number two. The existing tenants and everything will remain at that location as well. We, even though we're not expanding the footprint, we're not making any substantial changes because we're adding a line, subdivision line, we had to get some zoning relief, which we did, from the zoning hearing board back in, I believe it was October. And we're here tonight for the approval of the subdivision. So we're going to have our engineer, John Richardson, walk you through Gilmore's review letter, and Okon Memes, who's with Owner Marble, his family owns the business, he's here as well to answer any questions that you may have. Okay? Thanks.
That was a frog I brought with me. He wasn't supposed to stay there.
Good afternoon. I'm John Richardson. I'm with DUMAC Engineering.
I'm sorry, your name again?
John Richardson with DUMAC Engineering.
Thank you, John.
If I could just reiterate a couple of points with the plan. When we originally met with the township, they acknowledged that we weren't doing any additional improvements or adding additional stormwater on the site, but they did request that we do something stormwater. It was kind of a nebulous idea, do something. So we originally had agreed to do a drywell behind the building on the left-hand side, which I'll point down here to the plan. So we were going to do a drywell back here behind the building. There's a stone pad back there existing, and unfortunately, we did some soil tests. It's not feasible to do stormwater in that corner. So currently, behind the building on the right-hand side, there's an existing basin back there, and over the years, that basin hasn't been maintained adequately. So in consultation with Samantha Brinker at Gilmore, we decided that in lieu of the drywell, which isn't feasible, we were going to do maintenance on that basin, basically improve the basin back to its original configuration, or as close as we can to that original configuration, and that would fulfill our agreement with the township for doing the stormwater management upgrade. We have a review letter from Gilmore and Associates. I can go through point by point on that, or I can summarize it, whatever you prefer.
So I would suggest that besides your waiver request, everything is a will comply?
Besides the waivers, everything is a will comply.
So if you don't mind going through the waiver list and list the numbers for our records, please?
Absolutely. The first one is 177-14E, 177-41B, and 177-43J.
So let me, I know you have to be specific sometimes, so when you read the letters, just explain what that waiver is, please. Thank you.
The first one, 177-14E, is a waiver to request the separate submissions of preliminary and final plans be waived. 177-41B and 177-43J, they're kind of the same requirement, is to allow the existing ADA facilities on the site to remain, except or as modified by the plan. 177-41Q is to waive the requirement of the 16 trees for the parking area. 177-42A is to allow the existing lighting on the site to remain without modification. 177-48D3 is to allow grading within five feet of the property lines. That's to allow the existing basin to be upgraded to its original configuration. 177-49A is to allow stormwater easements to be 10 feet wide instead of the required 20. 177-55K is to allow the existing dumpster procedures, basically the existing trash procedures, to remain. 177-93A1 is to allow the plan scale to be 1 inch equals 30 instead of the required 1 inch equals 50 or 1 inch equals 100. 177-93C3 is to allow an aerial photograph in lieu of existing features within 200 feet of the property. 177-93C5 is to allow only located underground utilities to be shown, and that's the end of them.
Thank you, John. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Through the chair.
Yes.
So just to make sure, there was a letter sent from Traffic Engineers Review. That's the Panoni letter. If you have a copy of that, it's April 8, 2022. I just want to make sure that that's a will comply.
Those fall under the ADA. There's two comments. Both of the comments fall under the ADA requirements. That is what we're asking a waiver from.
On the signage?
Correct. Well, the signage, we're proposing signage on the building on the left-hand side. We are upgrading the signage, but we will not be upgrading any of the striping or the grading or the handicap ramps or anything along those lines.
Okay.
If the waiver is granted.
Yeah, but this one was for your signs, just an ADA sign for parking. That's all.
We will be upgrading the signage. Correct.
Okay. And, okay, got it on that one. The other thing is too, so typically with the waivers, if it has to do with the tree planting, if we grant the waiver because we understand that sometimes it's just not feasible to plant those trees, council may ask if you would be willing to donate a certain amount of trees then back to the township, and just asking if that was something that you would be...
We would be willing to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions from the commission? Kurt, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Thank you. Bob?
No questions.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Any comments? Okay. Hearing none, commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Recommend to council the subdivision of Owner Marvel? Owner Marvel and Granite, 225 Lincoln Highway, Fairless Hills, PA, requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval in order to subdivide the property into two lots located at 2900 Veterans Highway, Bristol, PA, tax parcel number 5-24-60, in a C commercial and M1 light manufacturing zone district of Bristol Township, as well as will comply with the Panoni letter dated April 8 of 2022. Also willing to donate certain amount of trees back to the township, as well as the waivers requested on page two of the Gilmore and Associates letter dated on April 8 of 2022.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for your time.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for moving your business here, too.
Yes.
Actually, I'm a customer, so...
Welcome to the township.
Yeah, welcome to the township.
The next item on our agenda is land development. This is for Florence Kawazaka. I hope I said that properly, close enough. Thank you, thank you very much. 31 Oka Avenue, Chalfont, PA, requesting preliminary and final land development and lot line change approval in order to construct three single-family dwellings on the property located at 130 Walnut Avenue, Croydon, PA, tax parcel number 5-008-096, in an R-2 residential zone district of Bristol Township. Good evening.
Hey, good evening. My name is Andrew Griffin. I'm an attorney from Curtin &amp; Heffner. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Habitat for Humanity of Bucks County, who's the equitable owner of this property pursuant to an agreement of sale.
And good evening, Andrew. How are you?
Good. Doing well. We also have the owner of the property here as well. With me, I have the executive director for Habitat for Humanity of Bucks County, Florence Kawazaka. I also have the director of construction, Mike Fallon. Then we also have our professional engineer and the VP of Carroll Construction, John Karasawis, as well.
Okay.
So essentially, the proposal is just to take the front parcel, which is 601 Bristol Pike, and reallocate some of the square footage. Specifically, it's 8,371 square feet from that parcel.
So Andrew, pardon me for interrupting you there, but I'm going to ask you the same question. Do you have a pointer, by any chance?
I do, right here.
Okay. But we don't have nothing on the screen.
Yeah. I'll wait it out. Right. So from this front parcel here, we're going to reallocate that square footage to the parcel in the rear. As a result of that reallocation, the front parcel will be 74,086 square feet. The rear parcel will be 21,231 square feet. This front parcel is the location of this St. Thomas Aquinas Church. That parcel will remain unchanged. All of the improvements and buildings on there will remain the same. The rear parcel has a school building that's unused on it currently, which is right here. The proposal for that area is to demolish the existing school building and in its place to build three single-family homes on three lots, two of which will be 7,200 square feet, and then the third one will be 10,995 square feet. We did receive the second review letter on March 29, 2022, from Gilmore and Associates. Originally, we had eight waiver requests. After reviewing that letter and discussing it internally, we've knocked that down to just four requests, and then we also added a request as a result of that letter. So I don't know if you received. We did do an amended review letter this morning, if you have it, but basically, we eliminated our request with regard to ADA compliance with the sidewalk, as well as there was street trees and some required plantings in the landscaping plan. We're going to go ahead and comply with those, so those were removed. I'll have John walk us through that in a minute, but I know the executive director just wanted to give a brief summary of, you know, just generally how Habitat got involved with the property.
Hi there. So back in early...
Good evening. Again, your name, please.
Sorry. Florence Kawazaka.
Good evening, Florence. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm blessed. Have another day. I'm doing great.
That's great.
Thank you.
Good to hear. So back in early 2020, the Redevelopment Authority of Bristol alerted us to the opportunity that St. Thomas Aquinas Parish was trying to sell their school building, which wasn't being in use, and they were having a hard time finding an appropriate buyer, appropriate use of the building. We looked at it, and we consider this a win-win. Win for the parish, who has been paying a lot in the maintenance for this building, and it's underutilized. A win for the community because they're looking at a blighted, a building that is becoming blighted because it is not being in use. Habitat of Bucks County has been serving this community since 1990. We've built 123 homes throughout the county, 24 of which are in Bristol Township, and I'm sure it's no surprise to any of you that the price of housing in this county is, has gone through the roof, and there are lots of households that would love to live in Bristol Township, and we proposed to build three single-family homes, energy efficient, that will match the neighborhood and bring three households in to be paying taxes to Bristol Township and get involved in the town.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so as I mentioned, the review letter is really, all the review letters are will comply, except for what we have now is the five waiver requests. So I'll just have John come up and we can kind of just walk through them. The first request is from section 177-14E. That requires the presentation of preliminary and final plans separately. We're just asking to do those in one go-around tonight because the plans are engineered in final detail. I don't know, John, if you have further comments on that. The second waiver request is to section 177-53A. That requires that there be a minimum 1,500 square feet of suitable recreation space, or in lieu thereof, there would be a $1,500 fee for each residence here. We have three, so it would be $4,500. I don't know if you want to comment on our inability to comply with that. Trying to reduce costs as a result of it being a nonprofit corporation, as it will come out of, you know, the money that we obviously use to do these projects. The third request is section 177-91A1 and 92A1 as well. They're both really the same. They require that 1 inch equal either 50 or 100 feet on the plans. We're just asking to reduce that so that it's, or I guess raise it really, so that 1 inch equals 20 to 30 feet on the plans. Just provided for clarity, given the size of the property. Number four is, let me see, section 177-91C3 and 92C3. That requires that the plan show the location of all utilities and significant man-made improvements within 200 feet of the property line. Just a typical request is something we're asking not to comply with, but obviously, if we're asked at the next stage to comply with it, we would. And then the final one is one that we actually added after internally discussing the review letter that was provided. It was a salto comment B6 on the review letter, and that just involves grading. It requires that basically you're grading the edge of it stop within five feet of the property line, so we're asking for a waiver from that as well. And with that, that's really all of our requests. I don't know if you want to go through and point out anything on the plans or...
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Katsouris. I'm with Carroll Engineering.
I'm sorry. What was your name?
John.
John, good evening, John. How are you?
I'm great, thanks. How are you?
I'm blessed. Have another day. I forgot to put my hearing aid in before I came to the meeting tonight, and that's why I'm being repetitive, so sorry about that.
Not a problem. So just to touch up a little bit on that last one, the site is very flat, so the reason why we're asking for that waiver, we're going to do our best to keep our grading outside of that five-foot boundary, but due to the fact that it's flat, we may have to get a little bit closer to the boundary than we originally would or would typically. And also, our neighbor to the side, you know, is the church, so that's kind of the side and the rear, which are both the church's property, and that's where we'd probably be encroaching the most.
Okay.
Through the chair. Do you happen to have the number for that additional fifth waiver?
We do, and it's on our sheet, but it is 177-48.D3. It's on the back, the second sheet of that waiver request. If there are no additional comments or questions on the waivers, I can get into the response or the engineer comment, or the comment letters.
Well, as long as the, I'm sorry, as long as everything else with the township engineer's letter is a will comply, and we've been through the waivers, I don't think we need to discuss anything else because we know what we're doing.
Yeah, they're all will comply. I just wanted to point out one, actually, two comments. It's a kind of a repeat comment. It's section A under zoning, and it's also section E under general. It just deals with lot three stating that the square footage is incorrect. I had a discussion with Sam yesterday, I believe it was, and due to the shape of the lot, I can't point it out, but there's a little piece of a chimney that I think may have been missed during their review, and we discussed it, and I think we worked through it. So the square footage is actually 6,550, which is 50 square feet over the requirement. That's the only thing that I needed to point out. And as you discussed, everything else is will comply.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Kurt?
I have no questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Bob?
Nothing, John.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have any questions? Any comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So in regards to Habitat for Humanity, 130 Walnut Avenue, BT number 211044, preliminary final land development and lot line change, first review, TMP number 05-008-095, and and number 05-008-096. In regards to this, we would recommend to council to grant both preliminary and final. And we would also recommend to council to grant the waivers requested on the Curtin and Heathner letter dated April 20th, 22. But we would like to make mention of one thing. And that is for the waiver requesting square feet of suitable recreation or a fee paid in lieu thereof. So typically, we won't waive that fee in lieu thereof. However, given the fact that this is a not-for-profit venture, we want to waive that for you. But we also want to make a notation so that it's not precedent-setting for if somebody, you know, a developer came in or something like that, because it's very rare that we waive it. But again, we recognize that for the not-for-profit, we want to give back, so we're waiving. You're welcome.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'd like the second.
It's been moved in second. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations, folks. Good luck.
Thank you, guys, very much. Have a good rest of your night.
Good evening, Father. I didn't even recognize you sitting in the audience.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I go to St. Thomas Aquinas. I didn't see him sitting until I just looked over.
John?
That was good. Okay. The third item on our agenda is zoning change. This is Lower Bucks Home Builders LLC, 20 Markham Court, Langhorne, PA, requesting zoning change approval from R-1 Residential to R-2 Residential for the property located on Prospect Avenue, Croydon, PA, tax parcels number 5-22-602 Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Matt McHugh, attorney for the applicant.
Good evening, Matt. How are you?
Good, how are you? I also have with me...
And I'm blessed and have another day.
I also have with me our project engineer, Joe Jones, and representatives of the owner, Chris Levens and Jamie McCafferty, and a pointer. So this is the first step in a two-step process for these properties on Prospect Avenue. The first step that's before you right now is the request for rezoning of the two parcels from R1 to R2. And I guess the screen's not going to work for us?
Well, it's consistent, anyway.
We'll go all night. I have large-sized copies. I'll try to hold up to explain. But the parcels, if everyone's familiar with Maple Shade Elementary School, Prospect Avenue runs this way. Maple Shade is located at the intersection of Newport. The parcels that we're talking about are identified in red here. It's two parcels. The zoning for the area, if you look, is fairly, fairly consistent. This yellow, this color yellow here is all R2, which is what we're being asked to rezone to. The parcel's currently zoned R1. Maple Shade was recently rezoned to R2 also. So this side of Prospect Avenue is R2. Then you have an R4 community here, one of the only in the township, an R3 apartment complex, another similar development of R2 right there. So it's something that I think that that side of Prospect Avenue is starting to turn towards R2. It's consistent with the general area and the neighborhood. The parcel are, there's two parcels here, actually. First one is a, is a, just a vacant parcel. The second one has an existing dwelling, which we're proposing to remain. If the property is rezoned to R2, we have a proposed subdivision, 10-lot subdivision, which will come next. And that will consist of, if I can, the existing dwelling will remain, will be a lot for stormwater, and then 10 new building lots, which are served by a horseshoe cul-de-sac. And that's what we would submit if the rezoning goes through. We would then go through the process of submitting formal subdivision and land development plans to the township. Just for reference, we also prepared a concept plan of what an R1 zoning subdivision may look like. Still would maintain the existing dwelling in a stormwater basin, but it would be eight new building lots. The main difference here is we would be able to get where these three lots are. We'd have five instead. And we think that's more consistent with the area, the sizes of the lots, the marketplace for residential dwellings in Bristol Township now. So we believe it's an appropriate rezoning. I think it'll be a, an excellent development for the, for the area here and consistent with the area.
Thank you. Commissioners, you heard the presentation. And what is your, your pleasure?
Through the chair.
That's Kathy.
So we recognize that you're home builders, and, you know, you have an excellent reputation. When we change from R1 to R2, R2 then gives some other usage, other than homes. And we just want to make sure that you're going to stay with homes.
Yeah, it's 100% our intent. We already have the subdivision plans prepared.
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
And the only other thing I'll note is in both the Gilmore letter and the County Planning Commission letter, I think they really more so lay out the process. But one of the items they do indicate is that council can, if they determine it's appropriate, require an impact statement. So we would be asking for a waiver of that section with this petition, which is Section 205.199. So we'd ask for the planning commission to act favorably on that as well.
Okay. Anything from commissioners? Any discussions, questions, concerns, recommendations? So I would entertain a motion from the commissioners on what our position would be.
So I'll make a motion in regards to zoning change, Lower Bucks Home Builders LLC, 20 Markham Court, Langhorne, PA, requesting zoning change approval from R1 Residential to R2 Residential for the property located on Prospect Avenue, Croydon, PA, tax parcels number 5-22-602 and number 5-22-602-003. So we would recommend to council to approve that zoning change, especially predicated on the fact that I asked and you confirmed that it will be home building there, none of the other uses. What I would say, though, is what you just brought up, I'm not familiar with that, so I would have to defer that to,
Gilmore?
Our township engine, yeah.
Sure. Understood. And it's, I think, if councils or the commission doesn't feel like they need to make or want to make a recommendation on that, I don't think it's necessary. It's something that's in council's discretion if they want to require it.
And pardon me, just to kind of keep the proper procedures here, we do have a motion on the floor before we start talking about this.
I apologize.
That's whatever.
No, I, but the answer was, so I would make that motion, but here they asked for, about the study, and we can't.
Yes.
That part would have to go to council. But yes, we would recommend to council to approve your zoning change from R1 to R2.
Oh, I thought you were including that as part of your motion. That they have to, because we don't know that.
I, that is part of my motion.
That is part of the motion, okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, comments or questions? Rick, do you have anything? I mean Kurt?
I have nothing.
Sorry about that. Bob? Okay. Anyone from the audience? Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. Good luck, everybody.
Very much, yes.
Having nothing else on our agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Moving to second. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. This meeting is adjourned.